Ms. Dargan.
Yes.
Ms. Stedson.
Here.
Mr. Greer.
Here.
Mr. Costello.
Here.
Ms. Gray. Ms. Gray cannot make it to the end. You can please rise and pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to this republic, which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoever speaks, bless you. Please also grant me the peace builder's pledge. I am a peace builder. I pledge to create some people, to give up what downs, to see wise people, to notice and speak up about our own type of causes, to right wrongs, to help others. I will build peace at home, at school, in my community each day. Under the open meeting law, the court of public that this meeting is being videotaped by Marshfield Public Committee. If anybody else is taping this meeting, either audio or video, please notify us at such a time. Julie O'Brien, 10 years being on this committee, you're the first person to raise your hand. Yeah, that's right. Absolutely. Good stuff. So we will turn it over to Dr. Sullivan to introduce our spotlight on excellence, and I'm sure Ms. Dargan will have some things to throw in as well. I believe our athletic director is here, Mr. Faddis, so I'll turn it over to you to start that.
Absolutely. Well, I'm very proud of this spotlight. Many of you, very proud of the spotlight, because many of you put your, the athletes, in action this, this fall. We also had a three program, captain's program, and I'm going to actually let Athletic Director Faddis speak from here and introduce our group, but I'm very proud of it.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and to the members of the school committee. And Ms. Dargan, who was really instrumental in starting this a year ago, our captain's leadership council. So excited for Ms. Pitts and Ms. Renard, who really took it to the next level this year, was what we were hoping envisioned a year ago. I'm just going to speak in general, because I really want to turn it over to them, and I think you'll be just as impressed as I was. They'll all introduce themselves. They are some of the finest members of Marshfield High School that we have to offer. Their leadership, their humanity, their compassion, their empathy for others is just amazing. Their families deserve so much credit for the young men and women that they are, and not just on the athletic field. We could sit here and talk about all of their accomplishments, whether it was soccer, field hockey, football, cheerleading, you name it. These people really extend themselves far beyond the classroom, in the playing fields, into our community. I could go through the list of every one of them and talk about the things that they have done in our community for giving back, and I'm just so happy that I live in such a great community with such great people. You know, they have such great careers ahead of them, and I'm just so happy that I got to see a little bit of them. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pitts and Ms. Renard, and they're going to introduce you to some of the finest that we have to offer here in Marshfield High School. So thank you.
You can if you'd like. Oh, my.
So thank you guys for the opportunity to kind of showcase what we've been doing with captains of the various fall sports teams. We're excited for you guys to kind of get a little glimpse into some of the excellence that we witnessed from these students. So just a little overview of what this class is. We work collaboratively with the coaches and the fall sports captains this time, but captains throughout the year, to really take their leadership skills and try to build them and extend them as much as we can. So they have been identified by their teammates, their peers, and their coaches as leaders of their team, and then we kind of take it into the classroom and build, identify a few of the characteristics that they already have and some things that we can work on to help them create a positive team environment and culture. So the way that, the way that it has run for the fall is that we met for six weeks throughout their season, and there are about 24 student athletes and captains that joined us. They are 45-minute classes, and they start at 7:00 a.m. on Monday morning in the NHS library. We have a theme for the week, and then we have a few notes that we share. Most of it is discussions, reflections, scenarios, questions that they either bring or that we try to share with them and put them into situations that could arise on their team, and then see how they would handle it, what they would do. A lot of it is sharing with each other, and I think that they kind of built a little community of captains who are in similar roles this, this season. Leaving the little classroom they have in the digital practice, it really takes the skill that we talked about and apply it into their sport or their team that week. And we do email weekly updates to coaches so that they are aware as to what we are doing and what they kind of should be looking for, checking in with what they kind of took from this class that week. So we really focused on six, in the six weeks each, we had this own competency that we tried to highlight in a leadership overall goal, to build leadership skills. So week one, we talked about what is leadership? Week two was effective communication between the captains, between the captains and the coaches, between the captains and their teammates. Week three was motivation and team culture. Four was conflict resolution. Five, week five was leading under pressure, and then week six, we focused on reflecting, what have you learned from this, as about yourself, about your teammates, and making goals setting in for the future? What kind of legacy do you want to leave on when you have, as a captain of your team? So these were the fall sports, all that were represented in the program, and all of the captains of all of these programs attended the classes, the six weeks. So you're just seeing a little sampling of the captains. So to get us through kind of like what we actually did, each of the captains is going to come up and speak on something that they felt like they learned or that they could take with them, and they'll introduce themselves, their sport, and then it will relate back to the competencies that we.
Hi, I'm a captain of the captains, and I think the competency of those that packed maybe week one, we went over what is leadership, what a thing like one captain looks like, what qualities our coaches and our peers are looking for, leadership style, like some guys are people that'll, you know, get in your face, be motivators, some guys are guys that'll just echo what the coaches are saying, other guys will just be, you know, be friendly and be captains like that. What role are you falling into, how you naturally fall into that? You know, some guys naturally are more loud and more in people's faces, other people have to kind of grow into that as captains. And what's the difference between authority and influence? Sometimes people don't respond well to, you know, being all up in your face and being a guy that'll just yell at you. You have to find the balance between being a motivator and being someone that'll be there with your teammates. And, yeah. The most impactful, the way it impacted me most, yeah. What we learned in week one, at the start of the season, we had a bit of a small football team. We weren't as motivated, seemed on the field we were performing, but as us three captains, we realized we all were kind of the same way, as we weren't like the loudest, weren't the most vocal. And I think after this first class, realizing we have to change that, we have to be more vocal and motivating with our guys, that kind of helped us, you know, get the energy out, get the motivation up, be there for our team, and I think that helped us in the long run. And some ways this impacts or it'll affect us, and I could keep with it for the rest of our lives, is adapting situationally, like we realized we had to change the way we were leading from being like, you know, just kind of friendly guys to be more motivating. Like I have two younger brothers, one of them is older, he's almost my age, the other one's in elementary school. I can't go about, you know, leading one of, I can't go about leading both in the same way because they won't respond the same way to that. So learning what way motivating is the best and which situations to use it in, yeah.
Hi, I'm Julie O'Brien, I'm a captain of the field hockey team, and for our second week, we worked on effective communication. And instead of some of the essential questions that we talked about in our discussions were how do you communicate emotions are high, verbal or nonverbal cues, peer-to-peer communication versus coach-to-keeper communication, and the importance of active listening. I think the takeaway from that was learning how nonverbal communication is just as impactful as verbal communication, and how the way you carry yourself and your body language, not only it's being washed by the stairs, but by your teammates and your coaches, and how the way you carry yourself and a positive attitude can reflect back on the whole team and set good examples. And in the future, especially during spring classes, and also college across, this is an important skill that I plan to carry with me, and also just overall for social interaction in the future, which is important for our body language.
During the third week of this football team, and during the third week, we talked about motivation and team culture, and we wanted to go through what motivates you and how we motivate our teammates. We talked about different types of motivation, like intrinsic and extrinsic. We also talked about how we can influence culture throughout the team with the way we present ourselves, in our posture, how we play on the field, how we talk to others. And we also talked about a big thing, a celebrating effort versus only outcome. We, we learned that if a kid tries to harden, push yourself, write that, and not just throw it away again, if they don't make the right play or something. And what I learned is that I was able to celebrate a teammate who's been playing offense the past two years, he stepped up, and he switched to defense, which he didn't want to do, and he ended up going from a chance on varsity to step up and play on JV, which definitely was impactful for him, but I was able to reach out and be like, thank you for stepping up for the team, like that's truly future leadership from doing that. And I look back and apply these skills in my life through like, just like the different types of leadership and strength I learned, like motivation, like I'm like a vocal motivator, like I talk to people, I like to be the one who, like the others at captains, they lead by example, I can think, but I think I like to talk and be vocal the most, and I'm able to apply this to my future life, like in schoolwork, and also just in my future recruitment to football, be able to speak up and make the best outcome of my life. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Charlie Leach. I'm on week four, our consulting focused on conflict resolution, and we then discussed how a captain can step in if there's a conflict with teammates, how to deescalate, wanting to step in, or compared to when we have to bring a coach, and we've managed to walk around the tension even a little bit. Where, how I learned about conflict resolution as a leader, especially as a captain for a teammate, I really learned with the chain of command issues within the team, where I have to step in, resolve this, or deescalate issues with teammates, before we find the coach or another trust in the dog, which is mainly important because it's really instilling trust and just creating better aspects within the team. And how I play the skills to future aspects of my life, I mainly thought of my future occupation with my family, knowing how to handle issues by myself and talking to others compared to immediately coming seeking help from someone, someone of a higher status, like a teacher or a parent.
Hi, I'm Sam Massara, I'm the junior captain, and for week five, we're doing leading under pressure, and it's really taught us captains to encourage your teammates while our coaches or other teammates were putting a ton of pressure on us, but still like making us love our sports and doing well at them.
For what I learned about myself as a leader, I learned to help keep my team calm when the routines change because people get on and off with the competition team, and I also organized quick adjustments when the people got injured because we were competing the next day. I communicated clearly so everyone knew their new rules and cleared up the mistakes the team has made so we can try not to make mistakes again, and I also encouraged teammates so they didn't get overwhelmed from discouraged from the stress, stress and pressure from my coaches in the upcoming competitions. And I've applied these skills to other aspects of my life. It's, I'm a junior, so I will be coming back to junior league, so I already know what to do when these problems do come up. I'm also a class officer, so junior year's very stressful with the deadline in coming, so I have heard how to say organize the pressure, make you communicate clearly.
Hi, I'm Ella Johnson, I'm captain of martial soccer. This is reflection and goal setting, this is our last week of class. We get to ask ourselves, what did we learn about ourselves as a leader, and then what leadership mistake made, what did you, and then what kind of likes do you want to leave as a captain?
What I learned through reflection is that we need to be led in a way. I'm able to communicate with someone the same way. I like to be motivated, push through tough love. Well, what they really needed was to be cold side to come and accept the weight, and help me relax and want to leave legacy of hard work constantly and lifting others up during the last week of being a captain. And then I'll be able to carry it on through college soccer and also hopefully my major of nerves, where I'll be able to communicate with my classmates in a way that everyone appreciates the most.
Thank you guys for letting us, you know, get this opportunity. It really is just like a level that's into what's going on in that baseball, like the student athletes are something fantastic up there, so it's nice to have a moment to kind of appreciate that and what they bring to the school and to the community. Moving forward, we met with the coaches today for winter season, we're hoping to start that class on December 8th, and just reflect on this experience with their, what we saw, and what the coaches saw, trying to make changes to our mindset and make it a key for the leadership skills in the team and my colleagues. Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to have a couple of things that we'd like to say, but I'll start and take it. Yes, yes.
Well, thank you for the nod, but really, this was Marshfield Athletics Boosters, I guess, I don't know the word, but, but the boosters organization heard about similar districts that were running similar programs and thought it sounded like a great idea for Marshfield. So we've been working on it for a couple of years, but getting the teachers and figuring out how to make it work, and this beyond, I think, the expectation, that you guys are awesome. This, the curriculum is amazing, I love all the stuff that's in there, it's super helpful, especially hearing from you guys that it was helpful for you, you know, sitting as a parent and a community person, it seems like these things would be very helpful. I hope that you realize that being chosen captain, you clearly had all these skills within you already, and so hopefully this helped you either recognize ones you previously recognized and put them into action to help other people, which is what your role is. So I'm thrilled for you. I hope, I know that most of the time, you know, the kids who are leaders are not just leading one thing, that you're probably involved in lots of other things, and leading at 7:00 a.m. on Monday, I guess it sounds that great on the surface, but the fact that you went and you were able to pull something out of it and bring things to it shows the commitment that I'm sure you applied to many other things. So, you know, kudos to you for putting yourself out there and putting the work in. I'm just thrilled.
Thank you, Ms. Dargan. Ms. Stedson.
Pretty much summed it up, but I just want to say thank you for giving, you guys obviously put in so much time in your sport, and also put in the additional time for this program, just thank you because it's clearly benefiting you and also benefiting your teammates and classmates, and thank you guys for your dedication.
It was very impressive to be captain of the chair since we went to school very young. It's a lot different. I, I love the way of approach it, you understand what it needs to motivate and lead as opposed to manage. It's a big difference to a manager, just pounding the fist on the table and advance results. Leader has to follow me on it. Right? And especially the football players, I think you can appreciate that, and also soccer, same thing, right? You demonstrate by, you know, it was very evident in your presentation, but some of the coaches, very good job, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of that. First of all, each and every one of you did an outstanding job presenting, like standing here and speaking like that. There was a couple of you didn't even need notes, and even if you did need notes, it's not a problem at all. You, you kept the attention of your audience, and you did very well communicating what you came here to communicate, so kudos to you for that. I absolutely loved this. I think this is incredible. I didn't even know this was going on, and I wanted to talk to you more about it. Much of my day job, I've worked with Mass Association of School Committees, and I'm already thinking about like, can we present about this at next year's statewide conference with superintendents? Like, more people should hear that something like this is going on. You are not just learning the lessons on the field, but this is the opportunity for you to take those lessons and do two things. Number one, engrave them in your own minds as you progress through our educational journey and just your journey through life, and, and kind of be able to connect what you're doing on the field and put words to it, but also benefit the other students that you're leading, like everybody else said, by knowing exactly how to hone your leadership skills. That's amazing, and that's something that should be recognized at a higher level than just our home school committee meetings, so I give you guys incredible credit for that. I'm very excited to hear that this is something that's going on in Marshfield, just one of the many hidden gems of Marshfield Public Schools.
Well, just to echo what you just said, but, but also to thank the advisors, it was such a fabulous job.
Yes.
And Ms. Dargan. It's wonderful. It's wonderful to hear all of you talk about your experience throughout this, this, this whole process and reflecting it into what you do on the fields and, and of course, and everything you work with in the fall. I love the reflection piece, where I've seen each of you had a moment in there, where you reflected on something you were doing and realized maybe you had to take a step back, think about it a little bit, and do it differently, because that really is a like long skill, certainly a leadership skill that will come in handy as you, as you move forward. You know, I was a captain, as you were, when I was at Marshfield High School, and I think some of the lessons I learned, learned there served me very well moving forward, and I think it's going to do the same for you. Very proud of you, and thank you to everyone that put this together, really very impressive, and very much why Marshfield's so special, so thank you.
I'd ask for one more round of applause for me. I'm going to do it before she asks me. Ms. Mazursky would like a photo of all of you with us. You could do that. Where do you want to do that, boss? Okay, we'll just come to you.
That's a fresh standing convention, I've seen enough of this before. Look at your camera and you look at yourself. There you go.
All right. What a great start.
So I'll down health, please.
Never. I'm going to move the informational items to the end of the meeting, if that's okay to everybody. Just hold it there. All right, we're going to move it to our student representative reporter. Are you calling triple reading?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So we're in the student council, so we've been organizing preparing for 2025 pep rally coming on this, not this, on the next Wednesday, on Saturday, in Siming, and we already started a couple of like the pep rally meetings, but when the, we pointed to the pep rally club. So the first thing that we started in Pennyworth, then we also started the food drive. So she'll talk a little more about Pennyworth, but essentially the food drive is whichever class donates the most perishable food items, they get a pep rally point. So all of these go to the Marshall Food pantry, and they might be first foods, donate to the food pantry for folks who win the pep rally club and being the best class. So, yeah, we definitely like, bring a lot more donations in. And we also have, like, got a few pep rally games. One of them that's new this year is like a balloon relay race where one person sits on a chair with a balloon in their lap, and another person jumps and sits on it with popcorn and kind of relay races. We're looking at that as a council this year. And then just kind of like, we're doing knockout as a group over here, and the reason we'll share is gather some points, and the winners get the pep rally club. It's always super fun. What else? We, oh, also on November 20th, there is a B-Fit assembly at DLU S sponsored by the Boston Bruins and the Blue Cross. B-Fit is a 45-minute all-school program focused on promoting a happy and healthy lifestyle by emphasizing perseverance, progress, nutrition, and physical activity improvement. Also, the DLU S will be awarded a grand $10,000 to help components and initiatives, and the school committee was invited to attend the, that should be fun.
Awesome. I look forward to it. Great.
I'm going to touch on a little bit of everything. So first off, Unified Basketball is kind of ended a season banquet, which was such awesome, well, so perfect. Each player was awarded a superlative, which is for banquet, tiny devotion.
Are you the captain of that?
Yes. I kind of worked to start it back in my freshman year, but yes. And then on November 25th at 5:30, Unified will be hosting Marshall Police versus Unified Basketball, and there will be some donations, and all the proceeds will go back to Unified. Some good business is parent teacher conferences. There is a second night of parent teacher conferences that will be held this Thursday from 6 to 8, so that's great. Shop Local Life, that's run by Decca, will host their third annual event on Monday, December 9th, from 6 to 8 in high school. This event supports the Marshall Chamber of Commerce. This is such a great opportunity for different clubs and organizations from MHS and the community to raise awareness, and all of the proceeds will go directly back to them. A little shout out to MHS, the theatrical society. Last weekend, they put on their first two productions of Flute. It was very funny and entertaining. There are three more performances this upcoming weekend. There's a Friday at 7:00 p.m., a Saturday at 1:00 p.m., and Saturday at 7:00 p.m. I went to the south side of the main grid, she and I were there. National Honor Society held their induction on November 6th, and MHS is wrapping up their annual COVID soft drive, which will be ending on November 21st, and kind of great turnout and good times. And finally, Pennyworth by Student Council. So Pennyworth is a competition between all four grades that's on the Thanksgiving grade. Each grade has a bin at the end of the two weeks. The bin and the grade with the most points, which is pennies, wins a point that goes toward the MHS program. So one point is added for every penny, and grades can deduct points from other grades by adding silver coin or a dollar to the, so all of the proceeds of that will go to the Marshall community.
Awesome.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
All right. We might as well just keep rolling with the athletics and go into the fall sports update. Turn it over to you, Mr. Faddis. So I'll, Mr. Faddis, give one very quick second so I can make sure that I don't skip this half. Now is the time to make a public comment. If anybody in the public would like to address the committee, please step forward to Gibson. See, now, Mr. Faddis, thank you.
Thank you. Also, I think this time too, I apologize too, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. O'Brien's hard work with the boosters as well, with getting the captain's alliance started, it's been great.
The dynamic duo.
Yes, they really are, they put it up here, which is great. It was, it's, it's been a great fall season, we continue. Football was.
Football month, the game remaining Thursday morning, obviously.
Who are they playing with?
Playing a team from around Duxbury. So, should we begin with, as it turns out? It will be from Marshfield, it'll even be a, if they win, they'll get sole possession of first place in the Canadian Division in the Patriot League. If they lose to Duxbury, which we won't talk at home, it'd be a three-way tie with Duxbury and Marshfield. Our girls' cheer team, or MHS' cheer team, I should say, they have qualified the net budget for the state competition this weekend at Worcester State. We posted the MSAA South Regionals this past weekend. Fifty-four teams, fifty-four teams for thirty, fifty-three showing up. A lot was long day, she had a good day. Our team did very well, so we're advancing, they'll advance to the state. All of our teams did very well. Everyone qualified for, this is the first fall in which everyone of our teams qualified for the state tournament. So, who knows, to the players and the coaches and the families, we're really having a great season. On the courts and on the street, I would say. But, you know, I think you get a sense, you're all well, you're all significant part of the community. Just the great people that we have in our schools, here in Marshfield. Throughout the district, certainly I can say, high school. You know, this is just a small little sample of what we have for, not just captains and leaders and upperclassmen, but really just the street audience as a whole. You know, I mean, everybody has a role in the work, just like the C and the E of the work with such great people. They're probably doing critical things. Again, they know bias, I've been here for 33 years, this is the only district that worked in, honest, my student teaching and everything like that. But, when I'm here for my colleagues in other schools and other districts, I'm really so thankful that we actually live here. Which is the special thing. So, we're getting ready for the winter start up already. We, Ms. Renard was at Simbelton. We had our winter coaches meeting as well today. We'll start officially on December 1st. Ms. Pitts, Ms. Renard, we're going to present the leadership council for the next seven leaders that will come on board for the winter, in that six-week course. So, it's been great. And really, we're very fortunate that, you know, our success, you know, is well beyond the playing fields and well beyond, you know, the fields that we play on. So, hopefully we keep that going, and I'm sure.
Great. Thank you for all of your leadership in athletic department, all the work you put into that. We very much appreciate having you here for all of that. It's been a very successful season.
Well, you know what? Boy, I didn't understand it. I'm just blessed with the people that I work with, and that students and staff like. And so, yeah, I'm just very fortunate to be working. So then, go ahead, sports.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we had a great season, advisor, and appreciate what you're doing. It is, what can we do to start the fever programs in education school? At the problem, I know it calls outside of the MIAA and the school.
Right, right.
But, as you said, like golf, wrestling, sports like that. Would somebody, is that you, or is that somebody?
I think it is, and I swear this is something that I would do. We had a meeting earlier this night, and, you know, we've talked about different things. At the high school level, and I'll circle back to your point about the fever programs, because that is, that's the lights line, we all know that. But, you know, in my time as a volleyball director in the last seven years, you know, girls' golf, for instance, which is a, which is a spring sport now. We've had people come forward from the co-op and Cohasset for a ski team. Just every day, a couple gentlemen asking what potential for a volleyball team. So, I couldn't agree with you more. I think tackling to the middle school is that next, you know, resource of student athletes that we have. Mr. Owen does a great job with cross-country and track at the middle school level. I think that's our goal, as we're, and ourselves too. When we did have more, I don't even know what we call that back then, these are girls' or middle school sports. You know, because the financial restraints of some districts out today, there's not a lot of middle school programs. But I think there's such an interest in athletics here in Marshfield, and certainly within our school. I think we could go down to the middle school, and even if we created our own little, I remember this as a kid, even creating our little, you know, middle school leagues, even if we just stay within the Marshfield community, because I really do think there's some interest for that. It gets people, it gets people to, you know, really get involved with sports and then hopefully take it to the next level when they get to that in school. But I think it would give them a good middle school program. You know, it would be great if we could go off and play the teams, because I think there, in some sports, you mentioned rugby and shooting, there's some middle school programs that have that in other schools. But I would be thinking, you know, street hockey, basketball, you know, sports that we could offer through our middle schools. And I don't know if we run them as an after-school program or whatever. If we had some of our upperclassmen, high school, go down and work with some of our younger students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, I think that would be really good. I was hearing this guy earlier about some of the cross numbers that we have for boys across the, I was looking at across the board, and same thing with girls', ice hockey, boys' ice hockey. Those numbers are just really, really big in our community. And I do think there's, I do think there's a lot of trust in them.
I mean, perhaps that the middle school has those after-school programs that you can sign a form on for a certain number of pieces. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, and actually, it's interesting you say that. I just read a conference today, and we talked about just that. We used to improve the middle school, things that they wanted. It was a middle high school. Five different stations, obviously, but middle school. Clubs, sports came right up to the top as a desire. You know, there are a lot of competing clubs and a lot of students, you more than they did back in our day. But I think kids want to play for their home school, they want to play for their, for their.
Well, yeah.
I do, yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know that actually, but I'm sure there are middle school teams around here that are, that we could.
There definitely are. Unfortunately, I think it's a lot of time, we've resources, I think some of those teams have kind of been put to rest right now. But I do think that, you know, there are still some that.
I was thinking about the youth, the youth, like Marshfield youth soccer, not the middle school team. Marshfield hockey, have a junior high team. Boys' youth, right, and a few others.
Right, but to play for the school.
It would be a first. It would be a better national sport that I represented by using a book in that were less.
Do you want to get some room for the spring with some of these sports?
I think we could, I mean, you know, what in particular we looked at? I guess if we go down.
So you're looking at golf in the spring, potentially wrestling, you know, there's enough interest. I'll be, if there's enough interest, I mean, we could be competing about the spring sports. But, yeah, when they're running up in school, the schedule is different than a lot of these clubs in the spring.
Right, one, I would assume that we would try to stay within the school. You know, when I travel around to the elementary schools, it's funny, you know, all the elementary schools there, you know, they're, I love, because they're right in the communities. You see a lot of kids that are hanging out at their elementary schools after, either playing on the diners or shooting grass football. So, I do think there's certainly an interest there. Dr. Sol was right, the club world being, or was really, you know, tapped into that, that level, what they get to us. But one good thing about high school is, most of those programs, local club programs, they don't play during the high school seasons because, you know, they realize, like you said, I think it's pretty special to play for your high school, for your community. But I do think that we could.
Obviously, not a director or anything like that, because we can't, you know, this is our service, yeah.
Right. But I think it's great for our kids. The more involved they are, you know, all the studies, I tell you, the more involved they are at school, no matter what the level, the more success they have down the line. And also, you know, the nature.
I think also, we're open to the idea of it. Like, as, you know, since Mr. Tyler came in and started all of cross-country and track, that took off in an amazing way. Because, you know, largely because of his efforts. But there's a, there's a need there. So if someone is interested in starting a middle school program, something, I think would be very intuitive.
Absolutely. Definitely good. I can go down, we can use the administration just so I can have, you know, time that they can set aside for me to speak to the students, and then, you know, meet with some of their faculty members, because I'm hoping that we can get involved by people down there to coach the students, because they know all that. And then we can look around, stop with Patriot League or Royal Patriot League, and see what middle school offerings they have.
There's nothing. Big cross-country team, huge track field, and not much in the.
I'd like to, I'd like to maybe rein in the conversation a bit, because this is very out of the purview of the school committee. It's good to ask the question. I totally get where you're coming from, and I know that it's a good thing for the district. But at the same time, this is not something the school committee has jurisdiction over. So I just want to make sure we're not getting too far into the meat zone. Yes, and so if you'd like to stay right here for our next item, which is the adoption of the girls' JV hockey and skiing co-op with Cohasset, so two sports programs that we have requested. I believe this request is coming from U S B Athletic, correct?
Correct, yes. Through, you know, through our work with our coaches. Again, this has happened a couple different times as well, too, who've come forward, at teams. So I think the first one, the first one would be girls' JV hockey. Last year, we were able to run a JV team, we kind of split it with the girls' hockey boosters. They paid for the site and for the coach, and we paid for the, it was a 10 or 12 game, I can't remember how many teams we had, for JV girls' hockey. They played it out of the water, they played it on Sundays, and basically, a good season. I think we ended up playing 11 games, because one game was canceled for the weather, we covered others in the camp. This year, the boosters, the girls' hockey boosters, are requesting that the school pick up the game position for the coach. Again, in competition with our coach, Coach Brown has played a great job the last few years since he's been the personal coach. It would probably require us to go down and get an eighth-grade waiver, a middle school waiver. You know, that's something that we've talked to Coach Brown about. Hardly is, I want to make sure that the program grows both this year, but also down the line. Getting the eighth-grade waiver, according to Coach Brown's numbers, he had 55 and seven eighth graders that would play. File for an eighth-grade waiver, there can be no cuts. The eighth graders who come up can replay at the lowest level. We've done eighth-grade waivers in the past with girls' hockey, we did it a couple of years back to support our varsity program. And we've done it two years ago to support our boys' varsity tennis program. We have invented for one, a sub-varsity team, so it'd be the first time in my, my seven years as an athletic director that we can run a sub-varsity team based on eighth-grade waivers. Again, those factors have been a question, would supplement the probably penny game behind the players that Coach Brown anticipated down this season. We did graduate a lot of senior class after team, they were both good lesson, so our numbers will look a bit lower there. The second one is a co-op to be a varsity ski program. In order to co-op with different schools, in order to co-op, you know, all schools have to be under a certain threshold of students. We could not run a road ski team. Probably the last seven years, I've had multiple times, students come to me and ask if we could start a ski team. Our numbers were never, never close to the point where we could have a road team. Cohasset has had a team for many years now, their numbers are lowering. So they actually reached out to us and asked if we were interested in co-oping with them. So, we haven't done anything officially. I did ask on a lead tour for the rights, for waivers to co-op with Cohasset Ski Team. That was great, and I've been up through the MIAA, and we assumed it would be accepted, because they like to have as many teams as possible. It would be hard for Cohasset to have their own team right now, based on just their numbers. But if they were to co-op with us, they would be the whole school, we would be able to hopefully get it to them. The first thing I would do is have a meeting, talk to probably three or four to five students who'd be interested in performing, to compete on the Cohasset or any joint Marshfield Cohasset ski team. So we'd have to kind of look at that. The ski team is a racing team, it's downhill racing, again, you know, working with them. Because they were the host team, they would have to coach. Our athletes would pay our athletic fee for that sport. And then, transportation would probably not be minimal, because a lot of that would fall on the athletes themselves to get themselves to a mountain center or to Blue Hills. Cohasset, from what I understand, they have a bus, similar to what we have here, everybody has a bus and transport. Actually, one of the students, ours, Kevin's 14, and plus one with a driver. I think Cohasset has a bin that's a little bit smaller. So we would have to try to figure out how we would transport our students to Blue Hill for training. And then, Ragamont is where the matches, where the competitions take place. And that would be, we'd have probably the central meeting place for students to meet up with our Cohasset teammates and be driven to the bus. Or students would be responsible with their parents, get themselves to Ragamont or Ragamont.
I would turn it over to the committee if anyone has any questions. Go ahead.
Just one question. You mentioned that eighth-grade waiver, there can't be cups, and then you said five to seven eighth graders.
That we are, we're told are just.
So if there were like 15 eighth graders, all 15?
All fifteen applying. And that would be the same with, so then we have 25 or 26 returning players we hold for girls' hockey. All of them must be kept as well, too. So then all of a sudden, the program really grows.
Yeah.
And that is one thing that, that's why we're very, we're very capable of doing the eighth-grade waiver. One, because of age, I think, because, you know, you have a player in the eighth grade who is pretty competitive against a senior. You know, we did that when we supported our varsity boys' tennis and, you know, varsity soccer, varsity girls' hockey. So that would be the case as well. If you can't kind of, you know.
So, I'm looking at costs, right? So the athletic figure would be the same, what would be that to give Cohasset?
We would give them Cohasset. The coach would be paying a lot of the Cohasset money, because they have a coach on there. It would, some of the, some of the costs would come back to us would be, at the end of the year, they compete at Ragamont, that's where the matches are. So if we had five races, it's $8 per race. So if we had three students competing in those races, we'd have to, we'd have to do that, that's what would come. Hopefully that would come from our athletic committees. I can't imagine having more than five students probably competing, because I haven't had more than five, talking about.
Right, so I guess the low cost would be transportation.
That would be, that would be our biggest cost, yeah. I think that would be minimal, just because I do think, because it's kind of a specialty net sport, I do think it require, not required, I do think it's a lot on families to get the athlete student from the mountain, the Red Mountain. Unlike what the citizens are typically hot, like, let's say we send five skiers over to Cohasset. I don't advise them to do that, because their numbers are low. Our skiers could all be catered on up to power to ski, to compete in those races. Because we're co-oping as a varsity sport, those skiers could be, I don't disagree with that, because they're co-oping with us because they need the numbers.
Is there a way to limit the number of skiers that go to Ragamont for a crew bits in the bus?
There certainly could be, you know, and again, it would be a competition, so if we have, let's say you get them 12. Where your best 12 are, if there's one Marshall person in that 12, only one of the five of us, if we had five, we could be all to race.
Right.
To race.
Just like, at least class-wise, it's a difference in transportation, if we can use the smaller bus that we have.
Right.
Right, that would be, especially to build our business.
And Cohasset, you know, we have to have our first meeting too. And I've worked with, no, Haskin Beach, Steve Duddy, he's a great guy. We've worked with him in a lot of yard event, just to see, you know, what they anticipate for their numbers to be. I guess if we could use a small bus, that would be ideal, so that's pretty costly.
And then we would do, that the only other cost would be each race that a Marshfield racer has chosen, what would be $8 per race per athlete.
Correct.
Well, it would be two separate, it would be two separate motions. I do have a couple of quick questions before we entertain any motions or anything like that. Like, I guess the big question, it kind of goes to what you just made. When would you need this improved light?
So for the co-op, we have really until almost, almost the holiday break for the co-op. Again, when I spoke to Cohasset, I really didn't know what our numbers would be. Because they, they really didn't know this. They wanted, they're a competitive team, so they want to see competitive. I couldn't say that I still love working, because we've got a ski team. So, you know, I believe that's the process that we're trying to, to work to be. So I, so we co-op, you know, we can file really until the holiday break.
Okay.
With the MIAA, is that where you are going to start?
Okay, and the JV hockey?
The JV hockey, so we started officially on December 1st. We have a league rule, the Patriot League has a rule in which, because many of our, many of our schools in the Patriot League have, but they're very fortunate to do it. Which is, which is great. We've won multi-levels. It's great one respect, there's also expenses another respect. It's great the fact that, you know, most of our teams are made up of martial high school students, so like 12 graders. Hockey, we're trying to grow the program, and so one of the things we're hoping to do that is create a JV program. Because what basically happens is, you know, you've got, you know, Coach Brown will help run two lines. I don't get what you're saying, Coach Brown. He'll run two lines, the forwards, two lines deep. That third line will play, you know, every year, even third or fourth shift. What happens is those that are in the sport line that have been pathing, they've been on JV planes for that Sunday league. In this case, since we graduated 12 players off the varsity last year of girls hockey, we just don't have the numbers to supplement what the team went through last year. We did pay $3,700 for that league. That, that would be the same because I already saw the invoice if we were to do that. And then, in this case, we'd have to pay a JV coach if we don't have them on staff right now.
Gotcha, okay. And I'm just going to roll those nine and then turn it back over to you. Yep, I appreciate it. So I get my, my one comment, and this is not critical at all.
No.
Please do not take it that way.
Oh, no.
We really, in the future, we really need to see these things before, you know, like the deadlines come and fall on us. Now, this should, in, in theory, this should really be a first read. I'm, I'm okay if somebody wants to make a motion on this tonight, mainly because it's you and I know and trust you. But just in the future, I, I feel like we need to set a precedent a little bit of getting these things a little sooner. We've been trying to do that a little bit, like we've got two items on the agenda tonight that are policies that are second reads. So we're just trying to do that a little more. So it just, it just because it feels a little bit like, oh, let's, let's go establish a new team. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. And I still don't want to feel like we're, you know, hardly done some really well a little bit. But it's the same telling, you know, these are things that, you know, came up, especially with registration.
Right.
When girls hockey starts to register, we just open up, went to registration.
Right.
There's this drop, you know, we open up, we get a few more girls. And I understand, you know, with girls hockey in particular, we had some girls last week who played for the first time. And it's, it's a challenge, and it's a commitment, it's a level of commitment. And so I'm glad they tried, and it is, it's hard, especially these times too when, you know, our population in the schools are, are numbers are dwindling. But we still are kind of holding strong with the number of student athletes. So certainly I do apologize for bringing that, you know, bringing.
No apology needed at all. Again, not critical at all, not, you know, not angry, upset, anything like that. Just trying to establish some processes here that, that are best practice. So I just figured I'd say it, because I know we hear from you every now and then when you need stuff from us, we always support you, obviously. Because we think the program you run is fantastic and we're very looking ahead to doing it. So that's certainly not critical at all. Mr. Greer?
Yeah, so I have some questions to come. So it, it, it's hard over the past few years to develop, creating new teams. And so I think we're giving the conclusion that the commitments to create new teams are commitments to develop teams. Right, so creating a team, I don't know how much we should move on last night, but what is what's known to me is the impacts of the budget. So what I suggest, I mean, if we were tonight, do a lot of these things that exist. There's something that I want to discuss funding as a subject of that, which we kind of, right? Because we have to make sure that.
I'm not sure I agree, just because the creation of a team essentially means we're going to be funding the team.
Well, so the, the scenario we talked about is every possible way to make which we don't have. Would you say, hey, look, we create these teams, that way the athletic rise order, you know, coordinating with the administration could all of a sudden find money, find, you know, somebody who doesn't fund that, could pull a shirt like that? Because this means that you have to apply to the MIAA or the varsity for, for this year.
Depending on the sport you're in.
Yeah, so it, it's not a simple process to start a team.
Well, I think it's when we create the team, right, the MIAA, we're then having their records that Marsfield High School has this specific team. And so if we have that in the official records of the MIAA, we better be backing that up with funding and making it available to students. I don't think it's as simple, and I, I get what you're saying, I just respectfully disagree.
So. But honestly, if we fund it, talking about the, the small team, so if we, for example, create this JV team, if it hits, where, paying the salary fee is, is different. It's a model, if you're starting the coaches, getting to the cost of.
But I think, I, I think the funding comes with the motion. Is when you, when you make a motion to approve something, you're making a motion to include that in the offerings of the district. And including that in the offerings of the district means that there's funding to ensure that it's in those offerings. Or else it would be an empty motion. With no intent.
You disagree with the disagree.
Okay.
So what is the money?
Well, I think that's about, I don't know what it's from. Hopefully, you know, based on hitting the eighth graders game, they would only play one sport. It's been really only eighth grade waivers, so anybody who came up and played, it would be there, you know, in that other fee. And right now, they're only three, three dollars.
Right, so we're kind of, yeah, it does matter, that's why we're paying a big amount of ice time.
So the ice time won't change it, because basically those players will work out during that varsity period. So we're not, we're not having ice time per second of practice. We would charge, we would be billed $3,700 to play in the JV league, in girls JV league.
So $3,700 is about, is sufficient?
Correct.
Right, that's.
Wasn't that, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, did you like, would you like to make a motion? David, the ski? Oh, okay, all right, that was, that was the ski, go ahead.
Okay, so I, so for, for the ski, for the ski team, I guess the comments would be, it feels like, cost wise, if there's not a heavy lift for us. It would just be managing the transportation.
Correct, correct.
There's no coach fee, there's no uniforms, there's no equipment, there's no officials or like that.
So part of that $8 is within race? That's, so they'll get a gift for number to be qualified participants. And I, I think they do have timers there, so, but that's part of that $8.
So there's $300 usually will cover their training at Blue Hills.
Yes.
There's no extra cost on our district for that.
There will be.
And then.
And then we'll do some off, off, we'll do some offlane training, but that will be a Cohasset high school or varsity. It'll be a varsity standard, so that's just practice.
So it would just be managing the transportation?
Correct.
Right, which is a concern for us.
It is, it is, it is a high burden.
Correct, okay. And then, for the girls hockey team, the actual concerns with, that once you open it and, and you mentioned that you would go to the middle school and make an announcement that any eighth grader can basically like one sign. So they have the areas, people, the various abilities. And if you're competing in JV league, that could include juniors in high school that are established hockey, you know, that are skilled and, you know. So I have a safety concern with that. And then also, you know, it's been our, it's been what, what we have created that we don't often offer eighth grade makers.
You're right, I've opened it twice and it's.
And not in sub varsity.
And that was the sport varsity was great.
So, you know, I think that there's already, there's already parental discourse and divide about that option. You know, and, and we are trying to work with the whole community about equity among sports. So I worry that if we open that to hockey, then there's any hard press to come up with reasons why we wouldn't open it all the time. And that, you know, that takes away from high school players. You know, I, I wouldn't doubt if there's a phenomenal eighth grade girl, that she's going to play more ice time than the junior that isn't getting the playtime varsity. You know, I don't know if that's what, I don't know if that's what our JV, sub varsity is about. So I'm worried about those things. And then, you know, because the, the budget is in a different position than years in the past, you know, wants to be open and wants to start. Down the road, it could be, it could be more, but I, I don't know. If we don't have the numbers and if the, if it lands on, up to the level of varsity, in other sports, they cost.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's true, they can only play, the eighth graders can only play outside the JV realm.
So they could, they, so if you do an eighth grade waiver, correct, they can, they, they can only play at the lowest level.
So they wouldn't take varsity's spot?
They wouldn't take varsity's spot, they wouldn't, no. Because they, they just wouldn't be allowed to take varsity's spot. So as, and Mr. Starbuck is correct, we've done it twice in my calendar. Once was to support the varsity boys tennis team. So all of those eighth graders, I believe we have at least three. And they came and played varsity, because that's all we have. When we take it for girls hockey, to support our girls varsity hockey team, that's when we play varsity. So I, she brought, you said, you have some great points on all that.
I, I think it is important to build the programs. I do know that there is a town hockey division, four middle school age girls, at Marsfield Beach Hockey. And there's a separate Marsfield Junior High V team for girls that plays, a junior high team throughout the year. So there's plenty of space for eighth grade girls to continue building their hockey skills together as varsity players.
Okay, Mr. Greer, you recognize again, and I'd like to move forward a bit, yeah?
Yeah, so my, my concern with, I mean, not the eighth graders, is you can't, now you can't copy vars. And so how do you comply with federation rules if you do that? You get a cross potentially, a large amount of dollars.
So that's for the varsity doctor?
No, it's for, for doing, are you going to go by federation rules? Are you going to say hockey, or what are you doing?
So for JV, the rules aren't as enforced as they would be to varsity. So you're absolutely right, like, you could not just wear 20 to the varsity level.
I mean, you're a hockey player.
Yeah.
I play hockey not well, but.
Thank you very much.
You're a much better player than I am.
You're not, no. And so I think when we did this last year for the JV team, for the girls JV team, those girls who didn't play much hockey, on varsity. Then went down and played JV. I understand Coach Brown's trying, we have to start a whole program, right, as I was talking, said, the whole team. So I completely understand that. It is a slippery slope. It's one that, that I've kind of battled with myself, just because, you know, you, you call it high school, you call it high school team. I understand that, I think, you know. There are certainly, especially, I think the five to seven girls that Coach Brown was referring to that are playing eighth grade hockey now are probably some of the, probably some of the best that will collapse up the school. But they would not be able to play beyond the JV level if we don't have a freshman team. Certainly would not be able to do the team. It, it is not, but I do apologize for the timing of it, because it is, it is late in that.
Well, some things are out of your control. I totally get that.
Yeah.
Totally get that. Okay, so these would need to be two separate motions. So I entertain a motion to approve the co-op ski team with Cohasset, if there is a, so move Mr. Stetson as their second. Second, at the start, all those in favor of the same, if I'm raising, you can say aye. Opposed, stating that's 4-0-0. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the JV hockey team playing this protocol by Mr. Stetson? So move Mr. Greer as their second. Second, Mr. Stetson, all those in favor of the same, if I'm raising, you can say aye. Opposed? That's one, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Batasen, if you have nothing further for you.
$2.
Do you want to say it?
Yeah. This would probably just be a general, generally, forward, and getting out of the habit of, we were talking, we had our executive committee looking for a potential other team to the spring season. So would I, can I keep that now or no? Should I wait for that?
That is not posted on the agenda.
It is not, but so we're going to get it on the next agenda.
I would love it. Yes, that would be awesome.
So if I don't say everything, buddy, have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too.
Tomorrow, I need to support, but we really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks for your attention.
Yes, thanks so much. See you Thursday, next Thursday morning. Doc, Gary?
Yes, definitely. Hopefully, some people.
And perhaps.
Well, hopefully, maybe some people could make it to our, and look if I.
Oh, yes, I just want to say, can you get a busy week next week?
Oh, yeah.
Busy week, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that didn't pass. Yes, yep, one and three. Okay. We have two very quick agenda items stolen to new business, the acceptance of a donation, Dr. Starbuck.
Yes, this is a, this is a donation, the amount of $500 to our project reach. I'm keeping it to, to, that we have, that goes on in all of our, and it is from Leonard La Forest.
Leonard La Forest.
This Mr. La Forest is donating $500 through your consideration.
Awesome. Any, any questions, comments? It is very generous. Thank you very much, Mr. La Forest, who is obviously somebody who does a whole lot for the worship. We appreciate being part of that tent. Mr. Greer, do you have a motion that you'd like to make to accept the $500 donation to the product? Yes, take the motion.
Take the motion, motion accepted.
Awesome, motion's been made by Mr. Greer, it's their second. Second from the start, and all those in favor of the same, if I'm raising, you can say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, that's 4-0-0. Disposal of breach materials, is this Dr. Mark or is this you?
I, I can do it, Dr. Mark, jump in if I do it wrong.
Would you ever want to be one?
This is a, this is just a, as school committee purview has it, we want to dispose some books. Actually, you didn't know the books.
Yes, so these, these are our ELE, our ELO resources. Materials have now been outdated. They are no longer on the Department of Ed's highly qualified instructional materials list. So we are just disposing these. We are currently piloting in a faulty year of implementation new ELE materials for our students. So this is just disposing of, I included the spreadsheet of everything in Webster and Martinson. That would be surplus.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, can we buy, make a statement?
Well, this is twofold. So yes, we have to, we want to go by their HQIM list. However, these are materials that meet the needs of our ELL learners, that we have to follow a curriculum for. That's best practice, that's research based. We can't just use our own materials. We have developed some curriculum, but we need the resources in order to implement, incorporate with our kids.
Yeah, there was my question. Initially purchased the course because of the desk.
Yes and no, but these are outdated. If you notice, some of the copyright years are 2011. That's, that's a long time ago. In 2017, so they are, I mean, new research has come out constantly around ELL learners. So I would say yes and no. But yes, we have to follow Desi's lead, but we also need to do what's best for our kids. So again, I think the copyrights speak for themselves. They're pretty outdated.
And that's a common occurrence in any subject area, correct?
Yes, except maybe, yes, except maybe history where you can get everything online and get up to date information.
Right.
I just have an issue with Desi.
You have an issue with Desi?
I don't, I don't even sit down.
In this case, it does seem to make sense with the 14 here, yeah, but I get the point you're trying to.
The formula is there, there are four segments, not one.
Yep. That's true. Yep, money that I could.
Some of the resources are.
Of course, because we have to educate our children, but I do get what you're trying to say.
Some of the resources we use are hovered by grants. I'm not sure. It depends on.
Some of the resources we use are covered by grants. I'm not sure. It depends on how much would be covered by a grant. If they don't, sometimes they don't offer grants to cover curriculum materials. It's just, it's, oh, what the grant is going to look like next year.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Stetson.
Do you have a question about the donation? This is a new ask, like, certain, maybe we're able to donate.
We will try. We always try and give them to students, um, if families want to use them or anything like that. Unfortunately, the, the list of places that take donations has really shrunk. Um, we have used organizations that call them words in the past. They do ask for donation when they come to grab materials. So, um, I will put out another feeler to the other districts around us and see if they have anywhere new that they come across. But our first, our first go-to is to give them to families.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to dispose of the breach materials as presented? So move from Mrs. Stetson, is there a second? Second, Mrs. Stark, and all those in favor, please, signify by raising your hand. Say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much, four zero zero. Dr. Mark, go ahead and keep that microphone. Keep, we have two policies to go over. I believe these are second reads. I apologize that I was not able to make last, the last read two weeks ago.
Second reads opposed.
Yes, yes, second reads opposed. So, um, we'll start with the competency determination policy. Uh, if there's anything further you'd like, you'd like to talk about, um, before I ask these people, any questions, comments?
Um, I don't think there's anything further. I think the only thing was just a reminder that we followed the MASC template. We did have more details in our original plan, but I think the committee, um, agreed with kind of getting this approved first. And if they asked for more information, we will add more details, but trying to keep it a little bit more broad. So as things change, um, again, as I said last time, Desi is in conversation about, uh, mandating and of course assessments that Desi would also develop. That's still in the works. So we could, you know, get this approved and not too much longer from now, we could see a total overhaul as well. So I don't know if anyone else has questions? I know we've talked about it quite a bit last.
I would just clarify very quickly by saying that, um, after we wrote the policy that MASC, we sent it over to Desi, and they responded to us affirmatively that it would be all their required. So that model of policy language was given the official thumbs up by Desi. So that should not be issued. Yeah. Would you like to say anything about Desi?
I would, uh, kids might be wondering.
Yep.
Uh, just like the two of the policies.
Ouch.
I, I would tend to agree with you. However, this is exactly, um, as much documentation as Desi was asking for.
For some reason, uh, because I tend to agree with you, but for some reason, Desi seems to want to delve a little more into procedure than usual for the policy. Um, so these are required things by Desi. And, correct.
Uh, yeah, it just, I mean, you get no, and it was.
It dealt.
I mean, breaks procedures.
Yes, but unfortunately, this is one of those cases where that the only reason we did it that way at MASC is because that's required. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the competency determination policy as presented? So move from Mrs. Stetson, is there a second? Second, Mrs. Stark, all those in favor, please, signify by raising your hand. Say aye. Aye, opposed, stating four zero zero. Mrs. Stark is completely passed. Um, and we'll continue right onto the middle school CTE pathways policy.
So, um, this is the actual policy. Again, Mr. Greer, this is exactly what, um, Desi is asking for us to outline in the policy. Some of this we did have in place prior. Um, I think the things like tours and especially reaching out to our agricultural schools, um, is a little bit more than what we've had before. And then, as I mentioned last time, we are still working on a curriculum, um, for the middle school. So although the policy will be in place and we will submit that, we still will have to submit our curriculum as well for our middle school. Uh, that, again, we were told, we were told that, uh, a certain platform would not be required, but now it sounds like within the next couple of years that platform will be required. Um, right now, that platform is free, but there are a lot of questions, uh, around, um, some schools, including our high school, uh, with a different platform. Um, and so what's going to happen when some of our receiving schools are using a different platform or sending schools? So that's still in the works, but we're going to just develop our plat, our, our curriculum as we have planned.
Yep.
Um, the other thing that I just was made aware of, I, and we assumed that, um, the other, so South Shore Vocational and the agricultural schools had to develop policies for, um, recruiting and retaining and selecting students. It sounds like we may have to develop something for high school, for our Marshallville high school because we offer some chapter seventy-four courses. Um, I did reach out to them today just to verify that, but I may be coming back to you with another, um, policy for high school around, um, how we are putting students in our classes and the same.
Yep. Questions, comments? Control.
The only question I did have for you, Mr. Costello, I'm not sure about the name of the policy, the letters, like what, where we might want to put this.
On top of my head.
So we might just have to add a file name after.
Yeah, if the committee gives us the discretion to, to file it appropriately, we can do the, the certain. And then, any, uh, further questions, comments? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the middle school CTE pathways policy? So move from Mrs. Stetson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Stark, all those in favor, please, signify by raising your hand. Say aye. Aye, opposed, standing. That's, of course, there's the, as well. Thank you, Dr. Mark, for your work. Okay. Any subcommittee reports instead? Okay.
At the, at the curriculum, the CTE platform?
Yep.
Um, right now, they offer a free version.
But we have soft costs associated.
Yes, how?
Soft costs.
Yes.
As you said, for training.
They'll be training on it. Well, right now, um, the platform that they are looking at having us use is actually, students would have to open their own accounts. Uh, we would not control opening accounts. We wouldn't be able to look at their accounts. We would not be able to reset passwords. All of that will be, um, in their hands because it has to be able to travel. Their account would have to be able to travel with them if they ever moved to another district, ever moved to a CTE school. Um, so those are all big questions to open a lot of us up right now.
Yes. So I think we continue to discuss this, but it's a, it's a, I mean, that is, uh, especially if it was to.
Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Oh, yeah.
Any subcommittee reports instead?
Um, and, and I'd like to say something, uh, for Desi, and we're continuing to, um, gather education, but I need to some projection into the next year. So, uh, we.
Great, thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay, I see none. Um, we're going to do the informational, we're going to do this very quickly, uh, Dr. Sullivan.
Yes, and I, I asked, and I'm very grateful for their information. We had a lot of presentations. So I don't have much to update on because student representatives took care of the major items of CLU, we fit, National Honor Society. It was just a wonderful evening. Uh, thank you, advisor, to get, uh, the, even taking over for Mr. Wesker, who has retired.
That would be why I really didn't care about it, Mrs. Stetson. We were wondering why it's the first year in like ten years that we have been, like, and we love, or didn't get a call or something.
Okay, I'll extend.
Which we don't take offense to at all. I just.
No, I wouldn't have been on the time. So I'll extend that.
Yeah, yeah. No, no worries at all. It's just that, you know, just because.
He, he, he did a fabulous job with, uh, make sure that you get it right the next night.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, we had, uh, Veterans Day, team went, we had a wonderful showing from our Marshallville school community at the three. We had our Spots and Stripes Club, prominently up front, uh, did a great representation. We had our Marching Band, Marshall Air Sand, McDonald's America, and other groups. We're just wonderful, very cool, but wonderful as well.
Yes, that's a freezing day.
It really was. It was very cool. Uh, we had a long committee, um, last night. Uh, it was great to see the, the team, uh, and, and really getting a lot of traction with the things now. Long groups sort of set in buildings. My student advisory committee had today, had a really lively conversation about, um, a survey that we're putting out to students in middle high school to get their opinions about some of our strategic pillars and the work we're doing in those. And, um, that's really all I had. I mean, you have Thanksgiving coming up. I wish all our families out there happy Thanksgiving. That, um, I vote of our staff, will be our bill of work weekend. So we will have no work over the Thanksgiving holidays. We want to make sure that we, um, take some time to feed the family. Uh, enjoy that, uh, to have it. Uh, the holidays can be very stressful, folks. So we want to just take a little, a little stress away from, um, as a staff , for the, uh, great, proud to make that happen.
Love, awesome. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Mark.
Uh, just three quick things, uh, just to acknowledge the MESS, MASC conference last year. Amanda Ripley was amazing. Uh, I also attended one James College, acknowledged a little press about, um, developing and maintaining the strength of leadership team. And then, of course, Mr. Costello did a session, our run-off student market and school communications. So, um.
I had a special guest for that.
Those were all highlights.
They, they, they had one Jeffrey Grandino, uh, yeah, that's, that's, it's from Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Mark.
Um, I was, uh, accepted to join the, um, Desi AI K-12 Task Force to find ways to support districts implementing policies and practices, learn the AI tools. And then, um, recently, uh, I was asked to represent MESS on the planning team, um, to offer an AI summit in the near future. So there'll be more income on that.
That's awesome.
Um, and then SEL steering team, uh, to select an SEL platform will be starting on Monday. So there's about twenty-five teachers, school psychologists, counselors, administrators on the team. Um, we will run it similar to our, uh, selection processes in the past. They've been very successful. So members will be working both independently and collaboratively, um, to look at the research, identify our priorities, select the resource, and then develop an implementation plan so we can put it into action this year.
Can we have a small, could you liaison to the SEL team?
We do not.
Well, we have, we have one of the long, and that was, you know, that, that really is, this is an issue of that.
Okay. If, if we have one of the, any, any reviews, let me know that all of that information is coming to the room.
Yes.
Dylan, who's got a story? Thank you, Dr. Mark. Ms. Clark?
I just have a quick update on the second year of the District-wide Dyslexia Committee. So the Dyslexia Committee is entering its second year of work. We'll do on last year's development of our MESS practices for calls and pathways to intervention resource, create a slide deck. Um, that will become an essential ref, uh, reference tool for consistent, high-quality dyslexia practices across all classrooms, and will continue to be updated as our work evolves. So this year, our focus, last year, we compiled the slides and pulled together a lot of best practices. And this year, the focus will shift to strengthening those school needs to dyslexic teams at each elementary school. Uh, each team, a psychologist, a team chair, leading specialist, specialty education teacher, assistant principal, with additional support from dyslexic coaches, director of PLB, ME, as needed. Uh, these teams will engage in ongoing case study discussions to ensure consistency in identifying and supporting students with dyslexia. So the year two priorities include using and refining the district's shared dyslexia resources, um, implementing the standardized testing protocol, native profile spreadsheet that we created, and continuing district-wide calibration through structured case study meetings. So three district-wide meetings are scheduled between November and March. Um, and this continued work strengthens our alignment, deepens our staff expertise, and enhances early and accurate supports for students with dyslexia across the district. Later in the school year, we hope to have members of the Dyslexia Committee present to CCAP, and we would also prepare, we'd love to prepare group communication highlighting our resources and our best practices in both general ed and special ed, um, regarding the type of dyslexia, how all of the.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Mr. Miller?
I'm actually, I'm, I'm good. No updates.
He's good.
I'm done for eight. Oh, we have minutes.
Sorry, we're jolly, we'll come. We have a minutes from September twenty-third. Okay, now motion to, uh, approve the meeting minutes from September twenty-third has been made by Mrs. Stark, is there a second? Second from Mrs. Stetson, all those in favor, please, signify by raising your hand. Say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, that's a four zero zero. We'll do the executive session minutes on the seventh of October. And this, this would be a motion to approve and release. And release has been made by Mrs. Stark, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mrs. Stetson, that's a roll call.
Mrs. Stark, Mrs. Stetson?
Yeah.
Mr. Greer?
Yes, thank you, four zero zero. Then we have the regular meeting minutes from the twentieth of October.
Hold on, for your meeting minutes, is it? No, you did executive, but it's.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
Do it next time.
The. Twenty, the not, you made the twentieth exact.
Yes, the twentieth, twentieth is in there.
We have a, we also have a, one of the stats, so we're gonna get.
Yeah, no, you're back like ninety-five. Um, this is the, the meeting before town meeting. So these meetings are, these minutes are.
Oh, sorry, the ten, seven, you're not.
Yes.
Last time.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes on October twentieth, that was by Mrs. Stark, is there a second? Second from Stetson, all those in favor, please, signify by raising your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. And then we have executive session minutes from the twentieth of October. Motion to approve the release has been made by Mrs. Stark, is there a second? Second from Mrs. Stetson, that's a roll call again, Mrs. Stetson.
Mrs. Stark, Mrs. Stetson, Mr. Greer, Mr. Stetson.
Yes, thank you very much, Stetson, four zero zero as well. Um, that is all the business before the school committee tonight. Is there a motion to, so move from Mrs. Stetson, is there a second? Second from Mrs. Stark, that's a roll call, Mrs. Stetson.
Mrs. Stark, Mrs. Stetson, Mr. Greer, Mr. Stetson.
Yes, and as Dr. Sullivan just said, happy Thanksgiving.